My Student of the Month is here and I am delighted to announce that January's Student of the Month for Claridin is Anthony Zembrano. Anthony, let me start by saying that I am always instantly happier when you are around. Your teacher, Ms. Hensel, describes you as her right-hand man with a heart of gold, and I think she's 100% correct. It was Anthony who presented me my very first birthday gift on November 24th this year. It made my whole day. Anthony and I also get to see each other quite a bit on my lunch duty, and he's always the first one to help clean up, help a friend or teacher, even help his principal understand what the cheese touch is and how to get it to stop. Ms. Hensel describes him the same way in class: "People just feel better in your presence, Anthony. I think it's your amazing smile, your quick laugh, your enthusiastic energy, sense of humor, and your genuine desire to be friends with all. Anthony, you mean a lot to all of us here at Claridin, and we hope we always give you a reason to smile each day, too. Congratulations, we're so proud of you." The winner of our Educational Services Professional of the Year is Mrs. Dahlia Rodriguez. Dahlia received her undergraduate degree from Amappell College of New Jersey and did an accelerated program for her master's in social work at Fordham University with a concentration in administration and policy. Part of her field experience was spent at the Bergen County Jail while she originally thought she would pursue her career. We are very lucky that in graduate school she was placed at her alma mater, Hackensack Middle School, where she found her true calling, working with children, and serving as a lifeline for the most fragile of the student population. She saw the impact she could make with children who truly needed someone to fight with them and for them. I think I also need to share an anecdote from today that I feel fits more perfectly than you intended, Dahlia. I asked her to tell me about her educational background so I could add it to my speech, and she joked, "It was a dark and stormy night." First of all, I don't think you realize that you're pitching your story to an Edgar Allan Poe fan, so yes, tell me more. How dark, how stormy. You made me laugh, but you also made me realize what an apropos way to begin to honor the social worker who was hired and had to begin work in our district on the very day the world shut down in March of 2020. Dark and stormy is putting it mildly. To say that the nature of her job as a case manager and social worker requires adaptability and flexibility would be such an understatement, pandemic or not. I don't think that there has probably been a day, including your memorable first one, when we all suddenly switch to a face on the screen, that you have done the same thing twice. In speaking with her colleagues and parents in the district, it became immediately clear that tough situations, dark and stormy starts, and challenges to face don't faze Dahlia Rodriguez. Dahlia fights fiercely on behalf of all her students, treats each family and child with diligence and care, always finds solutions specific to their unique social, emotional, and academic needs. She makes families feel at ease with her candor and humor. She's a constant advocate for children and won't stop until the right course of action presents itself. She has compassion, awareness, and understanding of diverse cultures, backgrounds, and perspectives, because it is of the utmost importance to her to provide culturally sensitive and inclusive services. I admire that you also shared with me that you look forward to observations and feedback. Self-reflection isn't always an easy thing, and I commend you for being a consummate learner, always looking for ways to improve yourself for the benefit of our students. Dahlia, your job has been unpredictable from the start, but I know I speak on behalf of all of us at Claridin when I say thank you, because we couldn't think of a better person to do it. Congratulations. I am so privileged to be able tonight to be able to honor Anna Mangello as our Teacher of the Year. I learned something new about Anna today, which also makes me a bit embarrassed, that as the faculty meeting began, I told the remaining bus students, "Let's go," in what I think was terrible Italian. You see, Anna speaks fluent Italian, as she was born in Italy and immigrated to the United States when she was six. She grew up watching her parents work extremely hard to provide a better life for their children, and credits them with her strong work ethic and desire to be an educator. Anna attended King University, graduating summa cum laude with a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education. She furthered her studies at Montclair State University, taking special education classes to help tailor instruction for her students. In 1994, she started her journey as a teacher at Claridin School, where she taught first grade for five years, second grade for 18 years, and then in 2018, she moved to third grade, where she remained until this year, when she became our Basic Skills Teacher for grades K to 2. I know that not everyone here is a Harry Potter enthusiast, but please humor me for a moment. Maybe you've read the books, or seen the movies, or marveled at the long line at Universal in Diagon Alley. Well, the choosing of the exact right wand for any given witch or wizard is essential, and it happens at Oliver Vander's Wand Shop. At Claridin School, the choosing of just the right approach to nurture and support a child's academic growth has happened for years, as if by magic, in Anna Mangello's classroom. I can tell you that throughout all her many years of service, whether you've been lucky enough to be her student, a fellow teacher, a parent, or her principal, when you are in the presence of Anna Mangello, you feel seen. You feel calm, you feel loved, you feel helped, you feel like she has already found the exact right wand that will unlock all your potential. You feel like everything will be okay. And at Christmas, you gave me the book A Long Walk to Water, and I loved it, and it couldn't have been more perfect for that moment in my life. And one of my favorite quotes from it reads, "One step at a time, one day at a time, just today, just this day to get through." How much calmer and more resilient would we all feel if we could just take things one task, one step at a time? And I've come to realize, that is the gift you give the students that you work with. You make the concepts manageable, your patience and love shines through in every lesson, you break things up into small steps, one day at a time, steps that you take together with them to make them feel safe. You have an incomparable talent for knowing exactly who each of your students are and precisely the right path you must put them on to help them get to where they need to be. But you don't just stop there. When you see a colleague that needs help, or maybe just a word of encouragement, you offer it. And I hope you feel seen here tonight, seen for the amazing woman, mentor, educator, mom and wife that you are. I see you and I thank you for being a constant source of help, inspiration, and strength for our school district. Congratulations.
Good evening. Tonight I'm given the pleasure of honoring our January Patriot of the Month. Sean Donnis is a sixth-grade student who is mature beyond his years. When you interact with him, you often feel like you are interacting with a high school student. He is an intensive listener, who is always respectful and heeds teacher input. He is eager to engage in class activities, and has an excellent grasp for what is being taught. During class discussions, Sean's hand is often the first one to go up, and he offers accurate responses and thought-provoking insight. He is kind to his friends and very helpful to his classmates as well. It is good to have him in our school. Sean is a positive influence on his peers and works hard to be an exemplary member of our school community. We are so proud of you and all of your accomplishments. Congratulations, Sean, as our January Patriot of the Month.
It is my privilege to recognize the Educational Services Professional of the Year. I am here to shine a spotlight on someone whose tireless efforts have transformed the lives of our students, fostering a positive and nurturing environment within our school. Guidance counselors play a crucial role in shaping the educational journey of our students, offering support and guidance as they navigate their academic and personal growth. This year, I am proud to honor Ms. Samantha Boxen, whose dedication and passion for the well-being of our students have set a standard of excellence. One of Ms. Boxen's greatest strengths is her ability to connect with the students on a personal level. She understands that education extends beyond textbooks and classrooms. She recognizes the challenges students face and works tirelessly to provide the guidance and support needed for their growth. Ms. Boxen has been a true collaborator, working hand-in-hand with her colleagues, parents, guardians, and administrators to create a support system for our students. Her ability to build bridges of communication and understanding has strengthened our school community. Ms. Boxen has a remarkable talent for fostering a sense of belonging within our school. As a school counselor, Ms. Boxen has implemented initiatives that promote inclusivity, empathy, and understanding amongst our students. Through her efforts, students feel empowered to express themselves, embrace their identities, and pursue their passions. It is with great pleasure to honor Ms. Samantha Boxen as the 2324 New Jersey Governor's Secaucus Middle School Educational Service Professional of the Year. Congratulations.
It is my distinct honor to recognize and celebrate an individual who I have the pleasure of working with. This individual stands out for their dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment to our students. This year, it gives me great joy to announce Mrs. Kelly Waters as the Middle School Educator of the Year. The moment you walk into her classroom, it is clear she truly enjoys teaching, supporting our students, and providing them with the skills they need to be successful. With creativity, Ms. Waters has transformed lessons into engaging experiences, fostering a love for learning that extends far beyond the classroom walls. For Ms. Waters, teaching is not merely a job, it is a calling, a craft that she embraces wholeheartedly. In the short amount of time that I've been at the middle school, Mrs. Waters has consistently gone above and beyond. Whether it's staying late to provide extra help, working with our students to put together that SMS newsletter, volunteering to chaperone an event, or supporting her colleagues, she continues to leave her mark as a member of our school family. In addition to her exceptional teaching abilities, with over 20 years of experience in the field of education, Mrs. Waters is always willing to share insights, collaborate on projects, and lend a helping hand. She embodies the spirit of teamwork and unity that is crucial for our school community. When someone loves what they do, they will never work a day in their life. She puts her heart and soul into her work, and it doesn't go unnoticed by her students, their families, colleagues, friends, and community members. She is an inspiration to us all, and we are fortunate to have an amazing educator who is passionate about her students. Once again, it is with great admiration and pleasure to honor Mrs. Kelly Waters as the 2324 New Jersey Governor's Secaucus Middle School Educator of the Year. Congratulations, and may your dedication continue to inspire us all.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to recognize a Secaucus High School Student of the Month, Destiny Salinas. Destiny is in her senior year, and she's an active participant in our school community. She's a member of the marching band, bowling team, the art club, and sale. Now during the annual high school toy drive, Destiny went above and beyond to spread joy and warmth throughout our community by donating a great deal of toys that she purchased with her own money. Her dedication to the cause resulted in a remarkable collection of toys that surpassed expectations, demonstrating the profound impact a single, determined individual can have on creating a brighter holiday season for those in need. Destiny, thank you for being a leader and such an inspirational member of our school community.
It's my pleasure to also recognize a Secaucus High School Educational Services Professional of the Year, Ms. Jill Paris. Jill started working for the Secaucus School District in 1994 as a student assistance counselor, and she has remained in that role to this day. Jill is a licensed clinical social worker, a clinical drug and alcohol counselor, a licensed psychoanalyst, she is our Gay Street Alliance advisor, and our Chi School-based advisor. And in addition to the many hats that she wears and the full-time job at school, she runs her own private practice. Jill is highly dedicated and knowledgeable and goes above and beyond for her students. She has a deep understanding of the challenges that they face, and her commitment not only benefits individual students, but she has significantly contributed to the overall well-being of our school community. She is a fierce advocate for our students, and her support extends beyond the school walls by making time for her students on weekends, after-school hours, and she even makes home visits. Jill has a fierce work ethic, she is a wealth of knowledge, and she simply gets things done. I'll give you an example of this. Part of her role is coordinating with outside agencies, which can be tricky because they don't work for us. But with Jill, it doesn't matter who they are, whether a doctor, a therapist, a state agency, a program director, she's able to make contact with them, and by the end of the day, she has the information we need or she is scheduling a meeting. Jill, I hope you know how much I value your opinion and how honored I am to work with you each day. Thank you for sharing your wisdom and sound advice, you are a true asset to the Secaucus community. Thank you.
And it is with great honor that we recognize Mr. Rafael Pastor as a Secaucus High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Pastor is a highly effective physics teacher, and we are fortunate to have him with us as a faculty member for the past 13 years. He teaches five different sections along with five separate lab periods. And since we are a physics-first school, his classes consist mostly of freshmen. I mention this because he plays a crucial role in shaping our students' academic and personal development. He is instrumental in providing the guidance, support, and educational foundation that students need to be successful throughout their high school journey. Mr. Pastor has a quote posted in the front of his classroom that reads, "The road to success is always under construction." I can't think of a better message for young students to receive, that continuous improvement stems from learning and building upon their skills. I heard a nice story today about one of Mr. Pastor's former student, who was entering into the Chemical Engineering Master Program at Columbia University. She credits Mr. Pastor's freshman-level course that put her on this particular path because of the confidence she gained and the success she achieved while being in his class. This is proof that Mr. Pastor teaches abstract and challenging concepts in a way that inspires and motivates students. His commitment to excellence and genuine care for his students make him a true asset to our educational community. Congratulations, Mr. Pastor, on this well-deserved recognition as a Secaucus High School Teacher of the Year.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year, Awardees, and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators, please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators.
Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators.
Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well. We're going to take a group picture with the board and administrators. Please come up. Ms. Carey, bring your plaque, please. Bring your plaques. Flowers are always welcome.
So at this time, I would like to call up all the Teacher of the Year awardees and the ESP of the Year as well.
I'm proud to announce that Ms. Wargaki, Ms. La, and myself have been chosen by the New Jersey Association of School Administrators to present at the conference next week. Our presentation will be on AI. The title is AI Innovation Educational Leadership: A New Era in Transformation. So we're looking to get some positive feedback and hopefully bring it back to the district and turnkey it for our staff. Moreover, Ms. Chinkini has been selected to serve on the New Jersey Department of Education Committee for Development of the NGSLA Science Assessment, and is a testament to her expertise in curriculum and assessment. Ms. La has also been chosen to present in the Future of Educational Technology Conference in February. She's gonna bring back some undoubtedly valuable insights, and will be turnkeying for the district as well. And lastly, I have been invited by the U.S. Department of Education to Washington, D.C. to meet with Congress and work on the development of new legislative policies for education. This is significant opportunity for the district to really get ourselves on the map and to make positive strides to our educational policy. We are very proud of these acknowledgements, which reflect our team's commitment to the innovation, excellence, and education. We will keep everyone updated as far as redistricting and the outcomes of these exciting opportunities and presentations that we have on our way. And again, I want to thank the board, staff, and community for your continued support and for being part of this exciting journey to enhance our educational offerings for the town of C-Caucus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alfonso.
I'm gonna be proceeding to the HIBs?
Yes.
So for the HIBs, we have in Claritin, one report. The one report was confirmed. Huber Street, we have three reports, one confirmed and two non-founded. C-Caucus Middle School, one report, not founded, and C-Caucus High School, one report and non-founded.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, bullying findings as reported by the superintendent and available at the administrative offices for review.
Second.
Can I get a second? Oh, you second? I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Business Administrator Board Secretary report?
Yes. Tonight, under governance, we will be revising Resolution R. 1.2, the High School Foreign Language Club, from a $3,000 stipend to $1,275. Also, under policy and regulation, I would like to add to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to add to the agenda the first reading for Policy 5410, Policy 5411, to remove Policy 5511 from the agenda and to abolish Policy 5412. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. At this time, I am going to make a statement on behalf of the Board of Education. I will be making a statement on behalf of the Board of Ed regarding the decision to abolish the middle school nursing position and to approve a nursing plan that assigns one school nurse for the middle school and high school. Let me start by saying that we are elected officials, and as such, we feel a certain responsibility and obligation to the public to make sure that we address concerns when those concerns question our responsibility as board members. We would never put students at risk. The safety of the district's students and employees is the board's highest priority. The board prides itself on making decisions which are always in the best interest of first and foremost the students, but also the employees of the district that we serve. As the newly appointed president, I want to assure the public that despite what was said at the January 5th reorganization meeting during the public forum and also some recent accusations that came to our attention on social media, we have at no time put any student at risk, nor is it unsafe to operate our district with four district nurses. New Jersey law dictates we are required to have one district nurse. I know that there was mention made to the CDC guidelines, however, state law is what governs our decisions as a board. So the proposed nursing plan, which will include three school nurses, exceeds the state's legal requirements. Having said that, we, as a board, trust and respect the superintendent and his administrative team, and so we engage them in extensive discussions on the proposed nursing plan on January 5th and also prior to January 5th on multiple occasions. Consequently, the board was prepared to move forward with the superintendent's recommendation at the reorganization meeting. However, after the public forum where we had several speakers approach and address concerns about this item on the agenda, the board made a decision to table the resolution based on the speaker's statements and board members' concerns in reaction to those statements. What type of board would we be if we didn't take into consideration what was being told to us, particularly since the items mentioned were very serious allegations? It is our responsibility as a board to make sure that we are listening to the public and addressing their concerns. I want the public to understand our role as board members. We, as board members, must trust in the people we put in positions to do their jobs and make administrative decisions. We are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the district, but we are rather a governing body that oversees these decisions. It is our responsibility as board members to make sure that when faced with accusations, we investigate them on our end and make certain that we are doing things properly. I personally went back and I addressed each concern that was mentioned in the January 5th meeting, and I would like to take a minute to report on the findings in an effort to ease the minds of the families who may be concerned by the comments that were made at the reorganization meeting. I met with the nurse supervisor and Dr. Alfonso, and we discussed at length the concerns. We also met as a committee on governance with the same individuals and also addressed these concerns at length. I want to go item by item and address the concerns brought to our attention at the January 5th board meeting. I want to be clear that the proposed nursing plan being recommended is not being proposed solely on the basis of cost savings. The 550 time-sensitive documents that were mentioned, we are working on getting the high school nurse assistants. We will be supplying the high school nurse with a secretary three times a week to help with the overflow of paperwork, and a substitute nurse will also be retained on days that is needed to provide additional support for the nurse. Dr. Alfonso gathered information from other neighboring Hudson County districts who deal with similar student health needs, and the following data was provided. I won't mention the districts, but they are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 surrounding Hudson County districts. The highest number of students were 3,200. So basically, it's a student, nurse-to-student ratio of about 1,000, 1,200 students to one nurse, and in some districts, it's higher than that. It was also mentioned that 150 student athletes were not compliant as of January 4th in regards to their physicals and put at risk. I have received assurances from our athletic director that any student athlete participating in sports has been found eligible by either the school physician or the student's private physician. The CDC guidelines suggestions are not what we follow. We follow the law, and as I mentioned earlier in my statement, even though the CDC makes recommendations on many things, our decisions are governed by state statutes, regulations, and board policies. Finally, it was mentioned several times about risking the safety of our students' health, and again, I will say that at no time did we risk the safety of our students' health. Thank you. If you have any additional questions or concerns, you can feel free to contact me or any of the other board members. Our information is listed on the district board website. Thank you.
Public forum.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the C-Caucus School District. This is the public forum regarding agenda items only. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and the subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous, mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by these individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public session should carefully consider their comments, since they can be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated.
Margaret Imprevadudo?
I'm sorry, can you turn on the mic? The mic's off. Oh, okay. Oh, sorry about that. Okay. Margaret Imprevadudo, Sixth Center, please. In regards to Resolution R. 1.03, it is to my great disappointment, this resolution is being voted on tonight, since the board did not meet with the C-Caucus District's school nurses prior to making this decision as the board suggested at the January 5th Board of Education meeting. Regarding sports physicals, I did give you the mandates and guidelines at the last meeting. They were in CDC recommendations. The medical director-slash-school physician does have to sign off on them for students to be eligible. You can look into it further. You can contact the commissioner, but that is just like a fact. Okay? Thank you.
Governance personnel?
Under governance, we reviewed and discussed job applicants and appointments for a school nurse and part-time speech pathologist, speech therapist. In addition, a maternity leave and resignation will be voted on tonight. We also talked about revising the Assistant Business Administrator-Assistant Board Secretary job description. We reviewed and discussed various job applications and appointments. We also discussed the approval of a professional nurse job description. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolution R. 1.01 through R. 1.15 and Motion M. 1.01.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education?
Under policy and regulations?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under policy, we reviewed policies on school visitors and crowd control as recommended by the superintendent. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolution R. 2.02.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education curriculum?
Good evening. We started our Education Committee meeting by reviewing some upcoming field trips. We then reviewed new curriculum for the AP US Government and Politics, which will be available online. As most of you are aware, storage space nowadays is a premium in our district. In an effort to free up some space, we will be getting an early head start on some spring cleaning, and will be disposing of old outdated books and materials. The committee also discussed piloting a new AI program in the middle school called Magic School. This program will assist teachers with creating and adapting lesson plans to students with different learning needs. This program will be of significant value in assisting with multilingual learner and individual education, individual education plan lessons. It is an adaptive program, so the more you utilize the program, the more it becomes efficient in providing lessons and labs. And finally, we had a healthy discussion on the possibility of adding more course offerings, creating more career tracks for our high school students in 2024, 2025. Thank you. I motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolution R. 3.01 through R. 3.04.
Second. Discussion?
Great job, Alex.
They don't even give me a chance to say, can I get a second?
No.
Yes, exactly. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Operations Finance?
During the Finance Committee meeting for the month of January, our Business Administrator informed the committee of the intention of the district going out for refunding bonds, which our advisors projected a potential savings of approximately 3.8% for the district. This is a direct result of the recent increase in our bond rating, for which I would like to commend Ms. Yao for her hard work and diligent financial practices, because without that, the bond rating increase would not have been achievable. We briefly discussed the upcoming 2024-2025 budget cycle. At this time, the process cannot commence as we are waiting on our yearly guidance from the state. The final topic for discussion in the committee meeting this month was a discussion about actively seeking and applying for more non-formular grants for the district to help bridge funding gaps and to assist in better utilization of budgeted funds. There is one grant currently on the district's radar, which will open in March of 2024. That is an interest, and once the grant period opens, the district hopes to pursue that grant. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolution R. 5.01 through R. 5.07 as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Safety, security, buildings, and grounds?
During the Building and Grounds Committee meeting, Mr. Shiafi updated the committee on the effectiveness and efficiency of the new school dudes work order system. He provided that 835 total work orders were submitted for the five district schools in the period of 7/1/2023 to 12/31/2023. Of those 835, 782 have reached complete status and 53 remain open. We were also given an update on the long-awaited and highly anticipated generator for Claritin School, which is now scheduled to be delivered in February and should be fully operational by the spring. With talks of a generator, it was discussed how Huber Street is the last district school lacking a generator, and with the approval of the board, I am actively seeking and searching for grants that will assist in securing funding for a generator for Huber Street School. Middle school and high school did not have any items to discuss in the recent meeting. I'd like to motion to accept the recommendations of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolution R. 6.01 as described below for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ad hoc, shared services?
We did have a meeting with the mayor's office regarding our Phase 1 of the redistricting protocol. We do have another meeting coming up on this Monday, and in February meeting, I will be giving a floor report of those two meetings.
Thank you. Legislation? Athletics? Technology? Communication? Circ? Board member comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Public forum. Board member comments?
I would just like to congratulate all the teachers and professionals that got their awards tonight.
Kelly, thanks so much for all the hard work you put in these last two weeks. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, too. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned.